There's no harm in calling the meeting to order at this point. I believe it's 6:04 PM and I'm calling school committee number 1,620 for the Southern Berkshire Regional School District School Committee. And the standing reports, I do not think there's miscellaneous correspondence and the minutes from the last meeting will likely be reviewed at our next meeting. Do we have a student spotlight?
We do not today. Do we have? Yeah, we do have a student representative report though, and Laura is entering.
Thank you. And I see Michael. It's your turn to give us.
Hi. So next week, the middle school and high school will be participating in the Great Kindness Challenge. We're joining around 33,000 schools across 115 countries in this project. And we'll be doing different activities and challenges throughout the week. Monday will be self kindness, Tuesday is random thought of kindness. Wednesday will be be kind to a classmate, Thursday be kind to your neighbor and Friday kindness is contagious. We got that to look forward to.
I love that.
Yeah, it's a really nice program. I believe there's a letter going out with all the information about the program and everything. But we'll be using this event to launch our scholarship that we've created as the student council. It is now named the Mount Everett Student Council Award for Goodness. It's, I've explained this in the past, but just to reiterate, it's essentially that the student body will get to nominate students in the senior class based off of their goodness and kindness in the community. And the staff and class officers excluding the seniors will decide and vote on the winner.
And this is from the what's raised through concessions and the spirit.
This is, we're funding it through, we had some money left over that we had found and this is going to be prolonged and grown with the school store that we're opening. So we'll sell stuff at sporting events and other school related events.
Cool. Thanks.
Just let me remind folks, if you want to ask a question, if you put your hand up, then I can see and we can try to keep this orderly. It's difficult for me when I'm home to run the meeting, so your help is appreciated. Anyone else have a question for Michael? All right. I don't see any, and thank you for coming. Our next item is public comment and I see several public members here and I'm very happy to have public participation. And is there anyone who has a comment that they would like to share with us? Does anybody?
I don't see any hands.
I don't either. Thank you very much. In the new business, it is my extreme pleasure to introduce you to Andrew Brown, otherwise known as Andy Brown. I think I'm because Beth has done most of the work on this recruiting and interviewing, I have participated in all the interviews. And I, I'm just so excited that I think we found somebody who was so suitable to us. And I can't wait to see how we can fly with them being the Eagles. So Beth, if you have any introductory remarks you'd like to make and in your packet, there's information about his background and experience and his plans for us, if you have the agenda packet with you or on your device, you might want to have a look at it while he's talking. Thank you.
So I'm, I'm just going to, you did a lovely job, Jane, and I don't think I need to say much more. But this has been an initiative that has been of great interest to the school committee and it has taken us a long time to get here. And we're just really excited that we've finally gotten through the process and have a new member to our team. So without further ado, Andy, if you'd like to tell us a little bit about yourself and what our plans are going forward, that would be great.
Sure. I'm, I'm really happy to be here and I am terrible at talking about myself. Mostly because I spend most of my life talking about other people. It's, I've been involved in education since I was born, both, both my parents were teachers. Both of my sisters are teachers, my wife is a former teacher. And I, I've been in communications for the past 20 years. I started out in the consumer goods industry and transitioned to the tech world and then to Southern New Hampshire University where I helped launch, launch their really launched, they had it for years, but they're really launched their online program. I left there to go to work for a small firm, Martin and Associates, that where we handled communications for primarily private schools and a couple of, sorry, public schools and a couple of private schools and a few nonprofits. And when with we, a lot of our clients were parallel to TMS. So about two years ago now, we decided to merge together and I was excited to have a whole new a whole new area of the world and a whole new set of schools that I could help. I'm hoping to start, start off with this process, Beth and Jane and I have talked a little bit. But Beth and I are, are in agreement that we're going to kick it off with simultaneously launching our communications audit, find out what communications are going on in the district and try to get them all organized. And a, an operational communications plan, which is a little different from a strategic communications plan in that we can actually get the ball rolling a lot faster. We basically, we would take a look at what we're doing now, organize it, see it, and then start scheduling it out and reformatting it. So that it's more consumable, better for all of your constituents, whether they're students, parents, yourselves are, yourselves are stakeholders and the entire community. I just want to tell the, I want to tell the community about all the great stuff that's going on and help them understand what needs to be done to make the schools even better.
And he's going to start with us on the kindness campaign, helping us get that message out for next week. So we're hitting the ground running right away. I see Bonnie has her hand up and then Jeff.
Yep. Well, welcome, Andy. I just, when we had our Zoom meeting, I have to tell you, I was just really impressed by your straightforward approach, your honesty about what you could and could not do. And it was very refreshing in, in terms of, you know, selling me when there was that interview, not that you were selling us. The other thing I did want to say, it must have to do with you because I had never heard of Southern New Hampshire University until the past couple of years. So it has to be your marketing. And the third thing is I hope you will get to speak with one of the members of our school committee, Jeff Blaugrind, a lot because since the day he went to his first meeting when he was deciding about where his children, I don't even know if he had a second one at that point, were going to go, he's had incredible ideas in the marketing area. And I would say of our whole school committee, he's our marketing guru.
Perfect. I'm looking forward to working with him.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andy. Welcome. And Beth, congratulations on making a hire. I think this is exciting for the district. Andy, I just, not really a question, but like it's more of a reaction to what you've already said and like already in a very normal way, you've talked about segmentation, getting the message right and consumable, in consumable bits in the various platforms up there. I think your attitude of, you know, approach of looking at it as different types of audiences and getting the message right is going to be perfect. And, you know, I'm not the professional like you are. So like, I mean, I'm more than happy to talk, but this is you and Beth and the rest of the administration getting your ducks together. But you have my blessing and I'm really excited what you can bring to the team. So.
Thank you. Thank you. And really, your, your opinion and all of your opinions matter a lot because at the end of the day, I can put out great messaging, but if the reaction isn't what we're looking for, it doesn't matter how good my messaging is. It doesn't matter how we, how we communicate if it's not being responded to positively.
I agree. Love to have an offline conversation.
Absolutely.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
So Dennis has a question.
Yeah, just, just a couple of quick ones, Andy. One, are you an Andy or an Andrew?
I am whatever you want to call me, but I, I usually refer, refer to myself as Andy.
Okay. So would you prefer Andy?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Then the second thing is, is that I'd be willing to bet from looking at your rap sheet that you are in New Hampshire, right?
I am in New Hampshire. I split my time between New Hampshire and Southern Mass, Northern Rhode Island. Most of my family is still in Rhode Island and I've just found my, my wife has a business in New Hampshire. So I kind of split my time between the two. So I can honestly, I, I miss my family. So I like spending the time between the two.
That's it. Thank you. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Jane, there, I don't know if the in-person people, but there are no other hands raised from the virtuals.
Right. We're good here. Is she, is she there? Jane, we're all set.
She's, oh, now she's not.
This is going to be a challenge.
Unless she went to give Larry Mids.
We're half an hour early. Okay. So it's on the bed schedule. So I don't know.
Wait a second.
Are you there?
Well, I unmuted myself. Wait a second. Wait a second.
We hear you.
You do hear me?
Yes.
Great. Okay. So I can continue. I'll try to put myself on, I'm afraid that if I, here, let me. Here I actually am. All right. Hi. The next item is about our school committee goals and I'm going back to no picture, you're just, just proving I am here. This is an, when I was going back in old agendas, like we do when we're planning, I noticed that last year at this date, we were working on our anti-bias, anti-racist goals in a workshop. And we've been just coincidentally, Dennis had brought out school committee goals and school committee self evaluation as policies to look at. And thirdly, Beth had gone into an agreement with us that her goals for this year are shared with the school committee. And this item is to introduce us to the concept of putting together some what I'm going to call smart goals, which I'll define in a minute, that build on this idea that our work complements Beth's work and that we can do some measurable actions because I think all of us know that our progress on our anti-bias, anti-racist agenda has been interrupted by the enormous number of hours we spent on COVID. And it's been difficult to move forward. And I'm not suggesting we abandon that as a goal. But I thought tonight I would introduce the notion of ways in which we can work with Beth to advance the academic success of our students. And I just want to say smart goals and we might want to think about them. Those of us who've been to MASC have heard these. These goals are specific. They're measurable. They're achievable. They're relevant and they're time bound. And I'm suggesting over the next months, perhaps we get down to some specific things that we think is, are going to help the success of our superintendent. There are some in her goals that we went over a few weeks ago, a few meetings ago that are certainly relevant because we said we were going to support her with the newsletters and with communication with the public and also being fully informed about the, the action steps that the administration, administrative team is implementing. I had a conversation with Beth. Another issue is a, a visioning process that we could help her catalog catalyze because there are some big things like the Bard Academy, the Bard Initiative and the internship program and the reshaping of our concept of high school that we all could be quite instrumental in helping communicate with public and certainly we would like to understand it deeply so that we can be informed. So I am interested in how with COVID and our challenges, we can feel some sense of accomplishment about what we're able to do that is going to have a positive impact on kids. So this is a discussion and maybe some guidance from you all about next, next steps here. I know that Dennis is interested in having the policy committee shape policies around possibly be informed by this, this discussion tonight. Is that specific enough to get, does anybody have a response to this concept? Bonnie?
Yeah. First, James, I'm glad you were able to get on.
That was exciting. Yes.
Yes.
I can't open PDFs apparently. I don't know what's the matter with the PDF. So anyway.
Were you able to open what I sent you?
No, we had to reopen a new Zoom window and type it in manually.
We tried to, confusion.
Okay. Yeah. All right. That's the problem I had with the PDF. I thought I'd sent you whatever. The comment I wanted to make is when our evaluate superintendent about executive evaluation committee met and Laura, I think you were there, right? At our executive evaluation. Yep, she's nodding. We saw a number of things and Jane, you mentioned it that tied together. And my suggestion would be as a quick down and dirty way to move ahead is if at the next executive evaluation, we make one of the agenda items to take the specifics of what the school committee has approved for Beth and pick out three to five actionable items for the school committee to do. And then we could report it back.
Yeah. Nice idea. Thank you.
Anytime. You're welcome.
Does anybody else have a strategy idea about also how we make ourselves possibly accountable and set up time boundaries for these things because we are a volunteer organization and we have a lot of work to do and I think we're going to get a lot of satisfaction if we can see the result of, of our efforts. I, I see your hand, Jeff.
Thanks. Um, yeah, last year was frustrating. I think we had a lot of big ambitions and then to be very sidetracked and then also I think with the regional school district planning board, those sucked out a lot of people's time and extra energy. I think something that would be worthwhile maybe to consider is, you know, similar to like, you know, workshop and coming out with goals, communicating out that at the front, this is what we're going to work on and then give progress reports. And then if we're not hitting the goal, we're still communicating out, this was a goal, it was not met. And maybe that's where the accountability lies, where it's actual readout and it just doesn't go to die so that, you know, if there's competing issues such as another surge of COVID or new information on the ground, whatever it might be that might detract us from our good intentions at the beginning of the year. At least there's some sort of report out and saying, no, this indeed is not done or yes, indeed this is complete. So the next year's body can then consider, do we pick this up again or do we move on? But I think the accountability is the way we look for that.
Thank you. That's another good point. I'm taking notes here. I do want to point out our challenges because if I, that action plan that we had last year, Genesis is no longer on the committee. Hannah Bracken is no longer on the committee. John Bruno is no longer on the committee. And now Perry and Petrick is no longer on the committee and those four people were key actors and motivators for moving forward. And we need to notice how much loss that has meant to us and the stepping up that we need to do to maintain some momentum. All right.
Sorry, Dennis has his hand up.
Yeah, Jane. Jane, when you started in this dialogue, you, you mentioned MASC. Don't they have kind of something? I, I'm not sure it's in their model policies, but I thought was that what you were referring to when you were talking about MASC? Don't they have some kind of guidelines and places?
Yeah, they, they have a really good rubric and guidelines for setting smart goals and tracking them. And Liz, the fund has come forward to offer to help us with that. If we feel like we have the energy and commitment to, to really go that route. And I don't want to put anybody down if we don't because frankly, we are exhausted by all that we've already had to do. But I think this job is going to be a lot more fun for us if we can see some good outcomes. So I think if we can squeeze, I'm looking at our calendar ahead because we have two months before the budget and we have negotiations going on. So everybody's really, really busy. And when there are extra meetings, I'm not sure exactly how to do this in a workshop fashion, which would be very desirable without overtaxing people. So I'm going to be looking at where we might be able to do this work unless there's a sense that we should devote regular business meeting time to this so that we make sure we do it. I'd like some feedback on that, please. Anybody have any feelings about how we might best succeed in terms of time commitment and scheduling? Well, yeah, okay. It's a tough one. I'll come back to you next meeting if there is, it seems, oh, Bonnie, an idea?
Yeah. I have an idea. And I'll speak just for me. I think with all the commitment that so many of us have between the regional planning board, people with new jobs, with negotiations going on and meeting nonstop a lot. And the work that we're doing with changing health conditions, et cetera. I would think that I, I don't see how for a good number of us we're going to create time for a lot of additional meetings. So I'm just being very honest about it. In terms of, you know, my ability to feeling how much more could be, can be taken on. And that's in a way, that was my cheat sheet, also because I thought we had a very good meeting with Beth in terms of executive evaluation. And I'd rather see us agree as a school committee that this is what we're going to work on in terms of a few, a couple of things. I, I I honestly don't see putting in a whole bunch of more meetings because as it is, and we have all the, all of the work that's going to be generated with the actions of the regional planning board and their upcoming meetings. And when you get to that topic, I think some of the work that we will have to do in connection with that.
Okay. Thank you, Jeff.
I would be remiss if we didn't actually revisit some of our items about, you know, equity, proper representation, land acknowledgements. There's, this is stuff that should be done relatively quickly. I think there's work that has been done. It would be my hope maybe we reconvene in workshop just to kind of see like, what is the level of effort to be able to push these things through and get done? Because I don't think the amount of work is necessarily that much, but I just do think we need to kind of level set and maybe we pare down what we try to deliver on, but there might be some action items. I think we're missing an opportunity if we completely abandon some of the goals that we set for lunch, too.
Okay.
Saying abandoned.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay.
Excuse me, Jane?
Yep.
Brad, Art and Danell, who would like to speak?
Oh, wonderful.
Go for it. You're up first.
I think with everybody's workload with COVID and everything, we're going to have to pare down and try to do it in some kind of workshop setting. We can't do it during the school committee meetings because we're just, we're just, there's not enough time to do everything that we need to do.
Danell?
Yeah, I think everyone understands that time constraints are the major issue, but I do agree with Jeff that there are a few topics that should not be pushed aside. Maybe we can all on our own time send you an email or somehow communicate with you, Jane, and each of the members let you know what our top two or three issues are. So we don't have to spend time during a meeting or a workshop deciding that. And then we just take the top three or, you know, one or two and go from there and discuss one at a time. I think Zoom or online is the best way of catching everyone we can for a workshop, keeping it down to an hour. And maybe, I don't know how these meetings are, I don't know, maybe devoting 15 or 20 minutes to, you know, every other school committee meeting just to say, update, this is the goal we're going to work on for this time and, you know, kind of get into the meetings that way, just to kind of tick off some of the work. Just some ideas.
Yes. Yeah, these are very helpful ideas, everyone. And I think what I'm going to contribute is to look at the roles of our various subcommittees and as you send me these topics, identify where some of this can be, work can be taken on by the, the subcommittees as Bonnie suggested, there are some that are, are appropriate for these kinds of actions. And I'm glad we're just reminded of our collective output is, is going to have a significant impact. And I'll do my best to help focus everybody and understand that the addition of extra meetings to, um, help focus everybody and understand that the addition of extra meetings is, is, uh, not favorable concept. But we hopefully, I'll look for a window where I think we might be able to fit something in. And please send me ideas and I will report back to you uh, that, at the next meeting, just give you a short rundown on how people are feeling.
Jane?
Dennis?
Dennis has his hand up.
Dennis?
What, I guess one of the things I was, that popped in my mind, Jane, as we're talking through this is, is that, uh, uh, years ago, a, a old timer told me, because I was asking questions of some of the old timers of how, how come we do policy the way we do policy? And, and basically what, what the answer was that I was given was that we do it that way so that we have a, a, a certain number of people that are kind of maybe taking a first look at things that we then can all talk about once somebody's maybe kicked the ones that are obviously not good ideas out or done that kind of separation of the wheat and the chaff, as we used to say. But what, what I'd like to propose here is that a, a better way of doing that would be to maybe have a special group, and I don't know what the right number is, four or five people, something like that. And, and get the commitment of all of us to say, do that on a rotating basis. That, you know, that, that, uh, you know, um, maybe it's like you sign up for a, for a half year term on this deal, something like that, but so that you're keeping a a, a reasonable number of people at a, at a, over a period of time engaged in trying to move the ball ahead. And so that, you know, the entire group then can, can be involved. And, and unlike how we do it in policy, you know, you know, uh, do, try, try this idea of saying, okay, okay, so wha- whatever that number is, three, four, five, I don't know what the right number would be. Uh, you know, uh, everybody signs up for, I don't know, a three month tour duty or a four month tour duty or a half year tour duty or whatever, you know? And, and kind of that way, you're keeping everybody involved. But you're, you're doing it, you know, in, in kind of that policy type approach to it. That, that's something I would kind of consider.
Thanks, thanks, Dennis. Um, I have added that to the list of good ideas. We'll, we'll see. Uh, I will do my, uh, put some effort into doing some thinking and I, I wonder if the, um, the superintendent evaluation subcommittee could spearhead this in some way because they're going intimately connected with with the, um, superintendent's goals and the idea of having working groups that work on particular areas in, in a less formalized way than, uh, standing committee sounds appealing. Uh, Bonnie?
Um, Dennis, I have a question. Is, is what you're suggesting it that once we come up with our three to five goals and, and let's say, uh, issues related to equity is, is one of them, that there would be a subcommittee that would sort of spearhead for the school committee shepherding this issue forward? Is that what you're suggesting?
I was, I was kind of thinking of the broader side of, if we're trying to say, let, let's work on the quote, goals, not specific goals, but on goals and what they should be and so forth and so on, of just doing in that kind of a fashion where we make sure that everybody at some point in the cycle is engaged in this, okay? Uh, but not that the, the whole team has to be doing it all the time, which, which everybody has kind of pointed out that 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 is kind of a difficult thing to squeeze into, especially in these times, right? So that, that's just, I was kind of proposing a way of, let's, let's get this thing started to where, you know, you can just keep turning the people over, but it will, but that basically we get the agreement of everybody on the committee that they're going to serve whatever we decide is the right length of time for, in a cycle, you know, that's all. Does that make sense to you?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not clear what they're actually doing. If, let's say it's you, Danell and James are the three, what are you actually doing during that three month period?
You're, you're cycling through, uh, you know, along with, uh, uh, what, what's your name, the NASC, uh, hopefully who would be involved in it also of, you know, one, what have other people done and what should goals be? And, you know, that type of, type of thing to, to start to build that framework.
All right, I, I will, um, be chatting with Dennis further. I have some ideas related to, that has been sparked by both of your comments and, uh, I'll come back with a, a clear proposal uh, next meeting. Uh, are we ready to move on? I don't think we have any unfinished business.
Right.
And, uh, is there somebody from the regional school district, uh, planning board that would like to speak tonight?
Yes.
Thank you, Bonnie.
All right. Um, I think that having attended this week the meeting of the community outreach group. Um, Laura, you were there. That I have a real sense that it is important that school committee members who can attend, it'll be totally virtual. It'll be a Zoom meeting. The meeting on the twenty fifth of the full regional planning board, because at that point, all of the reports from, from these twelve hundred surveys, all the reports will be presented along with initial conclusions in terms of direction. That's as unbiased as I can possibly state this. So if you go to eight towns, the number eight towns.org on that first page, you will be able to get immediately to the agenda. And then the next one will be on February seventh. Also, what was brought up at our meeting, and I'm just reporting at this subcommittee meeting, is that Peter is anticipating hearing from, um, this Massachusetts School Building Authority about his latest application for a new building. And the chair of the regional school district planning board said that she saw this, if, if there is a positive response, I'm just reporting this, that this is a wonderful opportunity for all eight towns to get involved in planning this new school. And I'll just end it with that. If anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Jeff?
Jeff? Um, what time is the meeting on, uh, the twenty fifth? Um, on the website, we don't see the
if you just click, click down that first page, go down to the twenty fifth to the numbers and I'll give you the date. I think it's five thirty to seven thirty. I'm trying to. Am I correct, Beth?
Five thirty.
Oh, I'm not coming in. Okay.
There will also, Jeff just triggered something for me, which is I had asked that there be time for public speak. Um, and this is an opportunity for, at, at the end of the meeting. So you will have heard the reports and the conclusions for anyone who would like to speak to the, to the reports that were introduced on that day.
Uh, Bonnie, I want to ask you. I sent some comments ahead as, as my public speak, was, was any of that mentioned at the meeting?
Your comments related to the, um, press
Press release, yeah.
What was, what, the only thing that was mentioned by Lucy is that a couple of people has submitted comments regarding the press release, because I also had done some, and that Mary and Jake were asked to consider those comments in whatever they release. So we should see a release like, I guess by tonight.
Uh, well,
But you, you specifically were not mentioned nor were your comments mentioned.
Yeah. All right, so, um, I, I wanted to let you know that, uh, I put Andy to work reading that press release to see if he saw it the same way I did. Which he did, he, I didn't even tell him the comments I sent and he sent me the exact same comments. So I feel like he has a really good sense of what is being said about this information that I have stated from the beginning as a scientifically trained person should not be used as reliable indicators of the broad community. Oh, and I think that it's going to be very hard to keep that perspective. Because it's a, I just want to remind everybody that every, it's twelve hundred people out of ten thousand who decided they would answer. The focus groups were not cross sections. It was who wanted to come. And I feel concerned if this is being used uh, as if it were well researched, uh, sampling. So that's just a comment I'm personally concerned about. I see Danell's hand up. Now, Danella, I, and Jeff wanted to comment?
I did not want to comment, sorry.
Okay, Danell, were you just scratching your head?
No, no, I had a question on, uh, I remember reading the press release, but do you remember when it was sent out? So I wanted to re-read it. And then, and then my second question
It has not.
Oh, it has not been. What, what?
Danell, it has not been sent out because what happened was there, there were reactions at, um, at that point. And based on that, they were to revise it and get it out before, before the twenty fifth. Um, also, I'd be more than happy to speak with Andy to give offline comments of more detail about what went on.
Yeah, okay.
And Laura, you might have some perspective.
Is Jane able to share her comments or not yet?
I, I couldn't go to the meeting because my husband, uh, was in surgery that day.
Or you're
Oh, what I could share with you?
Yeah.
Oh, I'd be happy to send them to the full committee if you'd like to see them.
Okay, okay, that would be helpful. I, I thought that the press release you were talking about was this other report they sent out, so never mind.
Yeah. I think we're very well represented on my committee. I'm very glad that both Laura and Bonnie are there. It's, it's a very important committee right now.
Bonnie's hand is up again, I think.
Yeah, Bonnie?
Um, no, I just based upon, I'm sorry, what Dan, Danell had said, I think I responded to it without being called on.
Okay, great. All right, I think, um, I, I don't know whether Beth wants to make any comments here. She usually does in her own, uh, report, so.
The only comment, the only comment I would make and, um, I think is really important to note is that, um, there's a lot of reports going out and, um, supposedly we're getting, um, enough time to read them and disseminate all the data that they've put in there and, you know, make comments. And usually it's a span of maybe a half a day or four hours. And I'm just going to be honest with the committee that I have not had three seconds, um, based on what is going on in our own worlds here to read reports before they're posted. I can't comment on the accuracy of them. Sometimes I'm not involved at all in any of the discussions. So I, I think it's going to be stated that they run them by the superintendents before they, um, post them and they really run by us. Um, but I, I haven't had, uh, you know, I just want to say that I, I don't really feel um, a hundred percent comfortable that I have a good handle on what's being reported and the accuracy of that. It's just not possible.
Yeah, thank you, Beth, and we, we appreciate how hard you're working. And I think it shouldn't be inter- interpreted that you don't think it's important, but are the day to day in our district is, is your foremost, uh, responsibility. So that's pretty clear. Um, now, subcommittees have some important reports today. So finance is hard at work at the moment. Jeffrey, did you need a minute to talk about it?
No, but we, uh, yeah, just one hot second. Um, we have a meeting scheduled on Wednesday. Um, is that correct? Beth, the twenty sixth, I believe. Is there next?
Yeah.
Yeah. So I encourage the public to attend if you're interested in this. Um, it's an ongoing dialogue. The administrative team does a lot of work on it. If you miss it, uh, a week, um, it can set you behind if you want to make a comment on it or, uh, leave a comment. So I encourage people to join. Thanks.
And, um, for community relations and public school advocacy, uh, Danell and Laura, I, I haven't heard anything, any meetings recently.
No, not yet, Laura. We should get on that.
Yeah. I think, and I have to chat offline to get all rolling.
Yeah, yeah, I would be, I would really like to talk to you too, because I'm noticing a few advocacy issues that we, you, you two might want to discuss and see if we have the bandwidth to get into them. So the, on state level, that is.
Okay.
Uh, C is, uh, Policy Subcommittee, Dennis?
Yes, uh, well, we, uh, we had a meeting, when, two nights ago?
Yeah.
Yeah, yesterday.
That's exciting. Yeah.
Yesterday. And, uh, uh, basically the, uh, uh, the, the net of that meeting is, is that we have, and I, I believe this was sent to everybody.
Yeah, and it was put in the packet so that the
Okay, so both in the packet and I think sent to you individually was a revised version of, of what was, of what is listed on the agenda as, uh, uh, policy JLCB dash CV, immunization of students with possible actions. Basically, the, the title of that has now been changed to, uh, uh, COVID nineteen testing for extracurriculars policy. And, uh, I hope that you have all had a chance to read it. Uh, basic, basically it's, uh, uh, you know, it, it basically is, is going to take advantage of all the great work that the administration has done with pool testing to, to focus on pool testing. Okay, which, uh, uh, and, and you'll notice it's, uh, a much shorter version of the policy that was initially put forth dealing with vaccines.
So Jeff has his hand up?
Uh, Jeff?
Um, Dennis, uh, and, uh, policy, thank you very much for going back and, uh, taking a look at this. Um, I, I thought it was very good work on this point, uh, this, this policy. Um, I'm wondering, um, if at the end of paragraph I'm wondering, um, if at the end of paragraph three, perhaps we add a statement such as failure to participate in pooled testing, uh, will make a student ineligible for extracurricular activities until the next pooling test date. Um, I want to speak a little bit towards my concern and frustration that, um, the dialogue in the community, um, that was kind of like saying, don't penalize the kids, and, and I agree, we shouldn't be penalizing the kids. But in some ways, the kids are acting more mature than some of the families that are preventing them to get, um, vaccinations, and we know scientifically that this is the best path for reducing the severity and the spread of COVID-19. I think personally, as long as the CD, the CDC and the FDA say that, um, the COVID vaccinations are not fully authorized, it makes it very difficult for us to authorize mandate vaccines. But I do still think putting pressure on, um, to making it very clear that there's no wiggle room in terms of masking and pooled testing, especially when it comes to stuff such as extracurriculars, to get people aligned, because some of the rationalizations are asinine, and people try to wiggle out of the rules. And I think it should, there should be a consequence, even if it's at a week at a time. Um, I don't know, um, Beth, if the new guidance that just came out to the state with an absentee issue for it is affecting how you would administer that, um. So I guess I have a question about if you have any thoughts of how that affects this policy. And obviously, I have not made a motion yet to accept this policy with my amendment, so I know that's just kind of lingering out there.
Um, I, I, I don't think, um, the new testing and, and I, I'm sure I'm going to mention it, I'm sure, um, Director Hubbard's going to mention it, um, in more detail, um, in our, and the meeting that we had with Public Health, um, yesterday, but, um, you know, that's still a work in progress, the new testing process, so, um, that has nothing to do with this. This is, um, what we're saying is mandated and what we currently are doing in the district on a weekly basis, so that, whether we adopt that or not, is not going to change this policy. And there is no real wiggle room, because, you know, you have to, you have to do it on that date. If you don't do it on that date, we don't have the ability to change that date, so if you miss it, you miss it for whatever reason until the next week, and there's, there, we can't make an exception for that, because we don't have the resources to do it, as we've learned before, so, um, it's pretty, it's pretty solid that you participate in this or you miss a week.
So you, you're saying that by not explicitly stating that failure to participate in pooled testing precludes you from, it, it's implied that if you miss it, you're out until you can get to participate in pooled testing?
Um, it, I, I, I'm not opposed to you explicitly stating it, but, um, you know, that, that is what would the, the protocol would be.
I think in terms of, I'm sorry, and I know I'm saying, I don't mean a monologue.
Yeah, this is, this, uh, you need to keep raising your hand, Jeff, because having a conversation is, is maybe cutting out some other people who want to get some clarifications too, so if you could pause for a minute, is there anyone else who wants to, um, clarify anything in this, uh, in terms of whether pooled testing is the only testing that, because do we, does it have to be the pooled testing is, is really the issue here? Uh, Danell?
Yes, 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 I don't, I, I think it's totally fine and, and wonderful to add what Jeff just said, um, just to make it very clear, and to make it very clear that there is no alternative, like Beth just said, you, you're not there on Wednesday for pool testing, you don't participate that week.
Or whatever day, whatever day the, they.
Oh, if the day changes.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I don't, yes, I think that we've been there, but Jeff.
Can you just repeat it?
Failure to test results.
There to participate in weekly pooled testing will result in?
No participation.
Maybe, well, this is what I said, failure to participate in pooled testing will make the students ineligible for extracurricular activities until the next pool testing. And.
Okay, I, Jim's hand is up.
Can the, can the kids go for testing on their own outside of school? There's test, there's free testing, you know.
No, they have to be.
The library in Sheffield.
Correct, but there, there's, it's free testing here, so it's going to be on our day.
Yeah, I, I, is there a motion on the floor? I don't remember.
I'll, I'll, I'll make a motion. Um, I move to accept the policy for SBRSD filed JLCB dash CV, COVID-19 testing for extracurricular activity, uh, curriculars policy, with the addition of, at the end of the third paragraph, failure to participate in pooled testing will make the student ineligible for extracurriculars until the next school period. Do I have a second?
Second.
My, I want to speak to my motion, um, Jane, if I may?
Absolutely.
Um, I think it's really important to make sure that it's the school pool pass testing, invoking the equity claims, uh, that a lot of the parents are invoking about that this is not fair. It is not fair to necessarily require, to allow certain people with means to get to private testing, to buy private tests, to be able to somehow be able to get around the rules, because they have more means to do so. By participating in the pool tests, they're on somewhat equal grounds, although it's not by all means equitable.
Thank you. Any other, uh, discussion before we vote on this?
And guys' hand up?
Yeah, just, you know, kind of expanding a little bit upon what, uh, what was just stated. You know, what's wonderful about this is, is that by making sure that the pooled testing is our pooled testing that's being done, is, says, that puts the, the, that puts the, the administration and the, and the district in the best position to know as early as possible when there is some infection that, you know, that, that exists. So, you know, I mean, I, I think it's definitely in, in the interest of all the students to basically do it in the way that we've described it, you know, in, in this process, which says that, you know, we're doing our own pooled testing. You know, nobody's doing, we're not saying you got to bring in a test of somewhere else or anything else. That says, it puts us in a better position of control to make sure that we i- identify as early as possible where there are some possible breakouts and everything else, and react accordingly. So I, I mean, I think it's a great, great idea.
Uh, Bonnie, thank you Dennis. Bonnie?
A couple of questions. One, it says all educators, staff, and age eligible, age eligible students. That means all the coaches will have to take part in this?
Are not vaccinated.
Excuse me?
Are not vaccinated, right? If you're vaccinated, you don't have to, but if you're unvaccinated, you do.
Okay. Um, that's question number one. Question number two is, uh, it's a comment more. I would like that the school committee is presented with, um, those groups that will be considered part of the group that needs to be pooled tested.
Have a list, and we were going to post the list of what is deemed an extracurricular activity. Non-academic. So basically, it's everything other than homework center, um, but I, I have, I'll have an entire list that, you know, we are posed to the website.
Beth, perfect, you answered, you answered my question, except for homework center, it's basically everything, and it brings up the, and I'm glad you made it very clear, we're not talking after school, it's all extracurricular. And isn't it called pooled testing, not pooled ED?
It's pooled ED.
Oh, it is, okay. Alright, so I think I, the only other suggestion I have is that it, it, I think the policy should have a beginning date and a line that basically says that it will be up to the school committee to change, this policy as, as conditions warrant.
I mean, isn't that the nature of policy anyway, but I, I mean.
Only because I want, when this is issued and you're sending it out, I think it's important that all parents know, if you're beginning this on February 15th, 2022, my, it's just my sense that I don't want anybody, you know, sort of making an excuse, oh, I didn't know this was happening.
Well, I will say this, just, and, and do with it what you may. Um, we put in here effective from the date of adoption, which would be today, if you pass it. What, I'm just saying, what I put in here was effective from the date of adoption.
Okay, so if, if.
I want to say, I'll tell you.
I'm sorry.
That's why I put it here, because typically you don't see starting dates in a policy, because you'd have to go back and fix it, you know, they're, they're, they're neutralized.
Right.
What we're going to say to you tonight is, like you know, as being participating in the, um, public health team meeting the other day, we're going to need a couple of weeks to pull the list, make some plans, so it really probably won't effectively happen for two weeks. So either January 31st or February 1st is when, or later.
Alright, so then, it's, I think then maybe we just need to clarify, it's not, if we pass it tonight with Jeff's amendment, that's not the adoption, the adoption date is the date that you've got everything in place. Okay.
Fine. Alright, uh, Jeff, did you want to add anything? Your hands up.
I, I think it got resolved, but I was just going to say, I think, um, for the sake of clarity, um, I don't think we need to overstate what's obvious, um, that it's inferred, but maybe this is an opportunity for Andy to do a press release and get it out in a concise way that, that we communicates what's the plan. This is the policy, now the plan is, you know, we're aligning resources, it's going to take a couple of weeks, and, um, we expect this to start happening this week. You know, and get that out at a time to parents, students, faculty.
We, we just need some planning time, we'll, we'll work with our, um, with our program coordinators, we'll, we might have to shift some dates around, so as soon as we know that, we'll be giving that information out and we'll, we'll get it going. Um, so, they're, further down, um, in one of our reports, you'll hear about the other new testing option that is going to be available, and we'll have to do the same thing. Another thing that we're thinking about, I might as well just say it now and take it out of my report for later, is that we'll probably do a question and answer session, again, another conversation, community night, um, to, to have a question and answer session with parents right before we move to this whole next phase. So we'll be sending all that information out together as, as we get it together.
Thanks, Beth. Are, are we ready to vote? I don't see any other hands up or any further, I can't see hands in the room there, the people seem satisfied.
Okay, here.
Are we voting with Jeff's amendment in it?
Yes, we are.
Or we vote, we're voting, okay.
His motion was, uh, because nobody else put a motion out for the, the most, the, uh, policy as written, we only have a motion out for an amended version, so I think we're, we're clear to go. Alright, so, um, Jeff?
Yes.
Danell?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Uh, Art? Karen?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Jane? Yes. Well, here we have unanimity after much deliberation, consideration, and I'm looking at this as our style of working, that we really took our time to be listening and thinking and watching, and I feel really proud of our, our group for coming to consensus on this, so thank you all very much. Thank you Dennis for your.
Thank you, Policy Committee.
Yes. Yeah, it was a really, uh, everybody behaved in a mature fashion, which I really enjoyed watching. Okay, off we go, uh, Dennis, those other policies are deferred that are in the packet, am I right?
Uh, well, we, we, we actually did not go through these in our last policy meeting.
Yeah, yes, so we'll be hearing about that in the future.
They'll, they'll be around.
Yeah, okay. So now we are going to our next agenda item, which is, uh.
Jane, I have a question for, um, the other policies on the first read. Um, Dennis, I have some questions about BAA. Um, should I just send those as emails?
Jeffrey, they're not first reads yet, because the Policy Committee has not looked at them. They were put in in case we got to them, but we spent a lot of time getting the other policy ready.
Sorry, I did not understand, thanks.
Okay, clarification, uh, Bonnie, uh, do you have any, uh, would you like some time for, uh, personnel and negotiation?
On, oh, okay, on personnel and negotiations, we are scheduled to meet next week on the 27th. Um, we've already had certain items agreed to by the SBREA, so obviously we haven't yet gotten into the, uh, fina, those things, financial, and Beth and her team have really been working on that. So, as they say, maybe you, we live in interesting times. That's the end of my report.
Okay, uh, it's my understanding that Buildings and Grounds did not meet, uh, again, but Art, did you want to make any comments? And, uh, superintendent's review, evaluation did not meet, okay, so, uh, I'm going down the list here. We do not have any other reports from liaisons, so I'm going to chairman's report here, and I just.
Uh, wait a second.
What, what? Oh, oh yes, I'm sorry, you were the COVID advisory, well, this is not the advisory subcommittee, but this is the health group that you attended, is that what you'd like to?
Right, but, uh, let me start with one thing, those people on negotiations, please, if you have any comments from our meeting that you want forwarded to Josh, please send them to me, as I will have to send those out tomorrow. Um, I think what I'd like to do in terms of liaison to the public health, and Dennis was there as well, I think I would rather follow the lead and just comment based upon what I know Beth and Sandy will have to say. So I, I would defer to that.
Thank you very much. Going on to chairman's report, I, I, I feel saddened that we received the resignation of Carrie Anne Petrick, who is a very hardworking member of our committee with passionate commitment to helping students thrive in our district, and I, I think it, I just, I, I wanted to let everybody know how much I personally appreciated their commitment, and that I'm, I'm sorry that circumstances, uh, forced them to, um, decide to leave. Uh, superintendent's report?
So Sandy, I'll leave the COVID-19 to the end, so we can tag team, so, um.
Jeffrey, you, yeah.
I, I have a question, actually, and I was just, as I was getting reoriented on the next thing, would you entertain a motion to move, uh, finance up? So that Chris can get off the phone, normally.
Sure.
Yeah, I just like, normally we would think about moving that up. Yeah, I just like, normally we would think about moving that up.
Um, yeah, I'll entertain a motion to let Chris speak now.
Um, I moved to move the business managers' reports up to the current position.
Second.
Uh, okay, we'll take a vote, I assume there's no discussion, Jeffrey?
Yes.
Danil. Yeah, I, yeah, I can't hear you, but James?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Art? Uh, Kara?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
And Jane, yes, okay, so Chris, Carrie Ann, thank you for reminding me about that, Jeff.
Okay, yeah, thanks, Jeff, thanks for moving me up. So I have a couple of reports for you guys tonight. The first is the expense report. This is the report that we kind of debuted at the last, or a couple of meetings ago, and we'll be giving you these once a month. It really just shows what we've budgeted, how much we spent, how much is remaining, and the percentage we've used, so, you know, when, when you run down the percentages used, you can see that, you know, things are pretty much in line. Some of these are a little bit trickier than others to follow through the year because items like teachers, for example, you see we've only used about twenty-four percent, uh, and you say, wow, we're in January, well, you know, the teachers start in September, and, and they get paid through August, so, you know, it, it's a little bit tricky in that regard, but, you know, if you look at something like administration, they start getting paid in July, and now we're halfway through January and, you know, they're at fifty-six and a half percent, so pretty much right on target. There's really no surprises at all, at least to us in this report. The only item, excuse me, that we see having, and I put this kind of in air quotes, spent over a hundred percent at this point, is the tuition expense. The tuition expense is basically the school choice, outgoing student cost, that's based, you know, really because we don't have the numbers when we prepare the budget, so we budget using the current year's numbers, you know, last February or so. Then items get trued up when they file the October first numbers, and it comes out to be what you see here, so, it was underbudgeted, again, you know, that's just an estimate, there's really not much more precise we can get than that. And so, but, you know, that's, it's not a problem, we certainly have the funds to cover that, and we'll be doing a budget transfer to, you know, to get that back in line. But at this point in time, oh, excuse me?
Yeah, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, I just wanted to let you know that, if you might have sent that report, but it might not have gotten with our, with our substitute person, it might not have gotten into the packet, so we, we might have to just send them the report you were just talking to after the. I apologize.
That makes it a little tough for everybody to follow along, yeah, I apologize, I, I did not know that.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, it's been a little tough with Lynette being out, that's for sure, so, all right, I'll send that off to you guys, it's not a problem at all.
Thank you so much, I'm sorry.
Do you have the, the budget transfers in your package?
We have, we have transfers in our report.
Okay, all right, so if we could move to the budget transfers next. Again, as I, I brought only a few last month to you, and this is just what, what we'd call typical cleanup, really. You know, some of these items, of course, again, with personnel items, you have things like people retire or move on, others come in, you know, sometimes they're paid more, sometimes less than, than the outgoing person. And, and just, you know, really, especially this year, in some of the items, we've just seen large price increases, quite honestly, and we've been going through that in our budget preparations for next year's budget too, where wow, prices have just gone up, and, and so, you know, when you prepare a budget, what was basically now about a year ago, nobody had that crystal ball to know that inflation would take off as it did, so we have items that are, you know, lines that are over budget, and so these transfers, again, just take care of that, get everything back up to a, at least a zero balance, so they're not over budget.
Madam Chair, I move to accept the budget transfers as presented.
Is there a second, second from Bonnie? All right, or any questions for Chris?
Um, Chris, any concern though, just with our budgeting for this year, knowing that inflation is affecting the real cost? And that we thought it was gonna be only transitory last year?
Yeah, I, I mean, you know, it, it's one of those things where, again, you know, sadly, if I had a crystal ball that would have predicted this, I guess you wouldn't be talking to me right now because I'd be on my own island somewhere. But nevertheless, you know, in preparing this year's budget, some of the things, and, and I'll be preparing a report for the Finance Subcommittee first, and then the entire school committee, for example, the bus bid came in for school bus transportation, and it came in very high, I mean, a big increase over what we had last year. And so, you know, with a cost, what, what was already about a million and a half dollars or so, you get a big increase like we saw here, and that's a large hit to the budget. So, you know, we're preparing a report to give to you guys, just so you can see where we were this year, where we're going next year, and, and then it's really up to the committee whether or not they want to approve the bid or, or look again. So that was one of the items that we really, you know, saw and, and kind of said, wow, that, that's a big increase. You know, the, the other tricky part with the budget, of course, is we're in negotiations with all of the units right now, and so it's tough to know what that's going to end up with, but, um, you know, we'll work through it, I mean, that, it's always that situation every time it's in negotiations, so that's, that won't be a problem.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, any questions in-house there, Beth, do you see?
Nope, I don't think anybody has any questions.
All right, so we're taking a vote on the budget transfers, Jeff?
Yes.
Danil? Yeah, you're, you're there, I'm sorry. Jim?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Kara?
Yes.
Dennis?
Oh, five seconds.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Jane, yes, okay, so now we go on, I'll entertain a motion about the warrant.
I've moved to accept the warrant as presented, January twentieth, uh, two thousand twenty-two.
Second.
Second from Bonnie, any questions for Chris? Let's see, any on the floor there?
No.
Did I lose twenty?
Okay, let's, ready to vote. Uh, Jeff?
Yes.
Danil?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Art?
Yes.
Kara?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
And Jane, all right, our business section is completed, thank you, Chris, you must be really busy these days.
It, it's pretty hectic, yeah.
Jane, not yet.
Not yet?
I want to make a motion to officially move the Treasurers Report up in the, in our agenda, so we don't go through this every week.
Second.
All right, um, I'll take a vote on, and that, I, that, I'll get to pick which spot, but higher up, is that the idea? Okay, here we go, Jeff?
Yes.
Danil? Jim?
Yes.
Laura? Yes. Art?
Yes.
Kara?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Jane, okay, done.
Thank you. Rusty's easy, Rust.
Okay.
Thanks a lot.
All right.
For new positions on the agenda, not gonna lie.
Okay, so now, we've been waiting, Superintendent's report.
I can't even read my writing anymore, that's where I'm at, um, okay, so we'll leave, we'll leave some of this to the end so that Sandy can weigh in. This week has been incredibly busy, but a lot of good things going on, we had the Mount Everett Bard Early College Collaboration interview regarding our designation application, our early college designation, and that was very intense, but it's just a really exciting opportunity. We should be hearing on that soon, and the, we should be able to release information on the all-school early college application, so we have two pending applications out there for funds for that program. We began our internal budget meetings with faculty and staff yesterday. As Chris pointed out, we have some concerns that we are, want to address, beginning with the Finance Subcommittee next week, transportation and energy costs are through the window, through the window, just through the roof, that one, through the roof. Or the window, or out the window, whatever, but they're not good. Both of those were in the twenty-five to thirty percent increases, and that is just really, really not great news. So we're starting to put that picture together and want to get, bring that to people's attention as soon as possible. I also have just been lamenting over the fact that this, this school year, like last school year, has not really provided me with an opportunity to get out and speak with teachers and in classrooms as much as possible for obvious reasons. And I, I have spoken with the administrative team about organizing small group meetings with a cross-section of faculty and staff at the district, where I get to sit down with small groups, and just touch base with every single person in this district, and my goal is to do that prior to our full budget presentation in March, so I'm gonna be eating my Wheaties on that one. So I'm hoping to, to spend at least twenty minutes or so with small groups. Let's see, I participated in the Promise Fifty-four MASSS focus group representing Berkshire County and Connecticut Valley's Superintendent's Round Tables, which is focusing on their initiative, their DEI initiative, and that was quite riveting, and I look forward to sharing what came out of that group with our, with our team as we look at our own DEI initiatives. I also participated in the Regional Consultancy for Superintendents, where it's a group of superintendents across the state of Massachusetts that meets monthly, and we talk about the challenges and strategies for getting through this work and supporting and advising each other on whatever the heck it is we're doing this week. We are going to move forward with our Community Internship and Partnership Task Force meeting. We're hoping, we had it scheduled, and it conflicted with a whole bunch of other meetings, so we're going to try to do a restart of that on, I'm hoping, I haven't really checked this with anybody, but I looked at the calendar, I'm thinking maybe Wednesday, February ninth at six P M. So that is what I'm aiming for. And ongoing for, we're, you know, we're working with the Policy Subcommittee, we have negotiations and lots of regional school district planning board meetings, so we are not bored by any means. COVID nineteen, we're maintaining our chart on the website. I, I got some more wonderful questions today, and people are saying, I don't understand the chart, I just want to reiterate. The chart, the state has to be reported from the Thursday of last week through Wednesday at five P M., because that is our reporting requirements at the state level. So people say, well, today's this date, but the chart said this yesterday and this today, that's correct, that we are updating it cumulatively from the last Thursday to the Wednesday. So someone said to me, wow, the chart changed a lot, sure did, we got eleven positives, you know, yesterday in one particular school or, so it's going to change like that and move, sometimes I get two updates a day, sometimes we don't get to it because we didn't get out of a meeting till nine o'clock at night, so we're doing our best to keep up, but it, it is going to fluctuate. But it, that, it's always gonna be, the date that's posted is the Wednesday that we're going to report by five o'clock, that's the stop date. We talked about our Public Health Team meeting this week, which the group is amazing as always, and we're so happy to have Bonnie and Dennis join us. The topic of the meeting this week was on the the statewide new testing program data, which is the result of the tracking that Sandy and I do and report to the, the state each week. So that gave a lot of information, and I sent the report to the school committee so they could see that data, I, I'm not sure, we may put that data out for the public too, so they could see what they're saying about the transmission in schools, which is that really the transmission, the schools are the safest place to be for students based on the data that we've been reporting and collecting since August, right, yeah. And I think because they were sharing this new testing option, which I'll let Director Hubbard talk about, because frankly, we're, I've had enough, but we can, and she's, she's, spends even more time with it. We're gonna talk about this new testing option, and it required that Public Health give us some feedback, or, you know, we give notification to Public Health, we like to think of it as a reciprocal discussion, if we're gonna pursue this, and overwhelmingly, based on the information we had shared, the Public Health team was in support of us moving forward and exploring this new option. It's going to take us a couple of weeks to get acclimated, there's going to be trainings and information coming, so I'll let Sandy talk about what we can now, and just know that there's going to be more information coming, so.
So there's a lot to talk about, but I thought I'd start with, and I should have jumped in earlier, I can't raise my hand, I think I'm a pro, so I can't raise my own. But regarding pooled testing, um, the whole idea behind that is that we test students, staff members who are together a certain chunk of the day. So when we're looking at this requirement to test pooled testing on unvaccinated students for the, this policy regarding extracurriculars, the idea is that teammates would be in the same pool. So the things that we have, the steps we have to take are gathering up all the information regarding the teams and, and clubs and groups that are together, cross-checking that, because there's going to be students that are participating in more than one team or club or group. Then we have to look at who's currently being pooled testing, pooled tested, pull them out, put them on new pooled sheets, and then cross-check to see who's vaccinated or unvaccinated. Okay, so there's a lot of steps that we have to do, I will tell you, I didn't get a chance to tell Beth this today, but I got a report from Wesley Drager, who had been gathering some information, she's a public health, works for Porture Health Alliance, and out of Egremont. I'm accurate on that, and very unfortunately, the only data she was able to provide is anybody, any children who received a vaccination at the W E B Du Bois School vaccination clinic, that wasn't a huge number, we're having a vaccination clinic next week, I'm really hoping that a lot of people are participating in that. Thought I checked in with the people who are gathering that information, so I had an idea of how many there were, I've had a number of people tell me, so I'm looking forward to that, so get that word out. Vaccination clinic, January twenty-seventh, one thirty to four P M., right here in the Mount Everett Library. On the sign-up, I put it out again today, I hope people are seeing it, so. So that's, that's kind of that piece of it. Regarding the new testing information, we, Dassie put out a lot of data regarding the transmission in school, I want to say something about the number of cases that we've had been reporting recently, Beth just mentioned, there were eleven cases. That was parents contacting our school nurses over the weekend, and then her reporting it all to us on Tuesday when we returned back to school and said, by the way, we had eleven cases, okay? So I think it's important for us to know that the transmission within school, not only here, but across the state and beyond, is very small, relatively speaking, so that's important. Now, as Amy Hart, Public Health, you know, tri-town Public Health Nurse said yesterday, the numbers are still up for us in general, right? They're going down, okay, it really spiked up, they're going down again, they're saying, they're like, I think she said half.
Yes.
And there was last week, however, for us, they're still higher than they were, okay, so we know this. The tech, but what the state is recommending, and they're recommending this for a whole host of reasons, they're finding that contact tracing, and we've heard this from Public Health over a month ago, contact tracing at this point is not something that's super useful. Therefore, it's time consuming and often doesn't reap a whole lot of benefit. They're also recommending, they're strongly recommending, or it's not a mandate, they're strongly recommending the school districts consider changing up their options to continuing pooled testing, follow up reflex testing. So if we have a positive pool, we we follow up with a rapid antigen test for anybody in the pool. Symptomatic testing, of course, if somebody in the building is symptomatic or in school. And then making available to anybody who opts in, we do not have to have consent, but staff and students, family, parents, obviously, who opt their guardians, who opt their children in would receive one rapid antigen test per week. They come in kits of two, so we would be handing out every two weeks a kit to anybody who opts in. Again, we don't have to have consent. All you have to do is opt in and you also have to consent to say, I'll let you know if I have a positive. Okay, so the things that we have to figure out right now are they're rolling this out next week for staff. So we have to get this information out to staff, see who's opting in. Then they're going to send us, we're going to let Desi know, we're going to order the test and they're going to send the test to us. Going to start with the staff. The following week, the week of January 31st. And during the interim, we're trying to get this information out to parents. The parents then can decide to opt their children in. And then during the week of the 31st, we order, we get the test and we distribute. Again, the idea is it adds a layer of testing, right? So we're doing the pooled testing for anybody who is participating in, by the way, those numbers have increased, especially with Omicron. More parents are signing their children up for pooled testing. And then, you know, we're going to space this out. Our recommendation is going to be to space this out. We have the home test. So now you have two tests a week that, you know, could happen. So that was the recommendation. I've been doing a lot of reading that report over again. I dug into the website. I sent some information out to the public health group today. We we had a meeting yesterday, a webinar. I sent the slide deck. There is, there's a, there's a page on the Desi website that has a wealth of information. There's letters about to send home to parents. It has videos. I mean, it shows you exactly how to do the test. It tells you exactly where to go. It's they did the, they did the but we have steps here that we have to take clearly. Got to get this information out. We've got to get the opt in sign forms back and then we have to gather this information, put it in a nice little spreadsheet and make sure that we have a solid plan for how we're distributing. So we were talking about that today and admin, we think we have kind of a basic idea of how we're going to do this. I think it's completely doable. I think, I think we're going to get a solid response. I mean, I've seen a lot of people looking for those at home tests. All of a sudden you're being handed those. This will be another way of us monitoring and hopefully mitigating the spread of the virus. So that is kind of the overview. We did get some feedback from the people in the public health group, but I thought largely
Very positive.
Just fairly positive, thought it was a good idea. Amy Hart spoke eloquently as always, just about her thoughts about it. The data that they did provide, and this is one thing she did ask about, she was concerned that there wasn't very much Omicron data and obviously that's kind of new to us since December, but the data provided to us was through January 9th. So we have some pretty solid data regarding how the spread is going in schools and then kind of what the the benefit or lack of benefit is to the type of testing that was was happening, meaning the contact tracing, oh, and test and stay would go away. Right? Okay, test and stay is close contact testing. So test and stay would go away. I will say that is a very time consuming process and it is a, it hasn't yielded a whole lot of result, positive input to any of our decision making here. So that is the recommendation. Contact tracing, test and stay go away, introduce home rapid antigen test to anybody who opts in and that will give us, like I said, an opportunity to have two tests per week and hopefully continue this process of dealing with COVID.
So Jeff has basically had his hand up.
Okay, Jeff.
I think you answered my question for those who both confused. Thank you, Sandy, by the way. This is an unending task. It's just a theme. So like, I think my biggest hang up with this when I read through it is I wasn't sure what was happening with pool testing, but if you can just, one word, pool testing remains and this is additional tests that people can opt into that are delivered. Okay, that's, I think a positive thing that I'm leaning towards. My problem with test and stay, if people are kind of clinging to it, is that test and stay only applied funding wise if people found out that they were exposed at school. So if somebody was exposed outside of school, they did not opt in for it. So it didn't even apply to all kids if they were exposed to COVID, if they couldn't trace the exposure back to the school.
And let me, let me say one other thing, since you just said that, only unvaccinated kids are staffed.
Oh.
Right.
A little, little nugget that was
People forget to mention that, but yes, it's unvaccinated only.
So, yeah, I, in terms of equity, I, I didn't think test and stay, when it applied to our family, like was easy or convenient. So okay, I'm encouraged. Thank you.
So does the, what the pool testing and then the additional antigen test for the people in that pool, if it's positive? That, that will
Yeah.
That, that
That's it. That's it.
We're getting the test that we need?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. All right, good.
This is the movement.
Yeah, it's a movement. Let me say, we were, we were told that we're going to get them. Let's see.
Yeah, right.
We got them. We just got 130,000 or something. On New Year's Eve.
But who's paying them right now?
Yeah, right, right. So that, that was the end of my report, the beginning of hers. I don't know if you have anything else.
Oh.
Could you possibly?
Talk about something natural related? I'll do that.
Yeah.
Kids are great, you know, I love the kids. It's great. I just wanted to mention, I did have a report in here. I talked just a little bit about the early childhood task force. We met on December 16th. We've really been looking, trying to get all the, the data that we can regarding the census from our towns enrollment projections. We've been looking at pre kindergarten for next year, given that we have currently 47 children in the programs, they're three and four year olds. So we're looking at who would be age eligible for kindergarten. And we're making tweaks to our screening progress process and working on curriculum on the pre kindergarten teachers are really working hard along with kindergarten teachers and just really doing a lot of solid planning. So we're going to continue to work on that. They invited me to their planning meeting next week and have some more ideas. So anything that I can share, I will certainly do that. COVID, you see, we continue to put out how to sign up for pool testing and as I said, mentioned before, more and more families are signing their children up. I wanted to mention that we applied for a competitive grant and have been awarded by Desi, the Supporting Students Social Emotional Learning, Behavior on Mental Health and Wellness through Multi Tier Systems of Support, $113,720. That's really exciting. Again, a competitive grant and it will fund a universal mental health screening, instructional and counseling supports, including professional physician, a part time professional physician and professional development for our teachers, including funding. We've been talking with Dr. Steve Park. He's willing to to work with us on this to really get something together that is meaningful and accessible to as many people as possible. So this is kind of exciting, new to us. We're just getting the information from, from Destiny and Ed grants and then we can move forward with with us to, you know, support a really highly needed area.
Yeah. Jeff, Jeff has his hand up, Jane. Just checking. Might be mine. Just checking.
Cindy, again, thank you. And this grant is unbelievable and it will not, it is believable and thank you for the hard work doing this. I'm worried about inflation and what this means on our budget and whatnot. In the second year eligibility, I think is really critical. And I think it's great for this year, but just kind of thinking a little further out. What needs to happen? Is there anything that we need to be aware of in the school community thing that we can remain eligible for these competitive brands, especially if we're dealing with inflation period?
Well, you know, I think the main thing that we have to do is do what they say, right? And then provide feedback and data. That has been made very clear to me when I, when we apply. The universal health screening, a mental health screening isn't very important. They're wanting that data. They're going to want a follow up report. As long as their funds are appropriated, the feeling is that they would be for the next two fiscal years after this year, we would continue to be eligible as long as we're doing the reporting that they are asking for. So as soon as this gets into Ed grants and we can move forward, my thought is let's get that, we've already picked out a mental health screening, a universal mental health screening that's like really user friendly. So I think that we can move forward positively. And on another note, this kind of goes along with something that I talked about over the summer, which was the Warm Line. Everybody remember the Warm Line, the mental health hotline? So we are at a place now very close. Soon as we get, the hardest part is getting a phone number, believe it or not. I can't believe that that's been the hard part. We have people ready to roll and some mental health professionals ready to man that line. This, I feel like this kind of goes along exactly with what that was all about and it will be more data for us. So I mentioned all of that in the grant. They loved it. So I feel like this is kind of melding of some, some ideas that we already had as a district, right? We were already allocating some funds. I look for every grant that comes to the table. I think everybody knows that. So right now, there are many, many available to to support our kids and staff.
Thank you.
What I know about that.
I'm hoping, because many of us have been also closet grant writers. And so what I was hoping is one of the next meetings in February, we could talk about just giving you a report of all the competitive grants that people have been writing. And so you can see how much of the work and support that we are giving to kids is being funded by grant funds. So I think that's important for the community to know. We're working very hard to, to, to do that way. Jane? Okay.
This might have been the time when she said she had a subway.
I think that was ago, but maybe she, maybe it's happening now.
I know I'm here. My mute went on for some reason.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. And I do want to apologize because we do not want Julie Dolan to feel unimportant. She got squeezed out. Bonnie, are we finishing up the Sandy report so we can get to Julie?
Yeah, this is on the Sandy report.
Okay.
First, thank you so much for everything. But I have a question. Have you come across any possible grants that we could apply for that would provide more social emotional support for our staff?
Today, yes.
We're working on it.
We're working on it, yes.
Great.
Conversation about that at admin today.
And, and can you divulge anything about the nature of it? Beth's saying no. Okay.
Saying it literally, it was hot off the press that, you know, we might be 10:30 this morning, so maybe some more time.
Well, thank you so much for being on top of it because that's really, you know, real concern for, well, for all of us. I mean, we've discussed it many times. Okay. Thank you.
I'm all set.
I am really excited that we finally get to talk a little curriculum and you guys, your eyes aren't rolled up in your head. So this is good. I put my report in the packet. I hope that you guys had an opportunity to look at our new Educating Our Eagles. I can take zero credit for this, other than the little blurb that I write at the beginning. I have to give all credit to Carrie Giordano, who puts together this beautiful document every month with the support of our teachers being willing to submit to her all the information she needs to put it together. I think it's a wonderful way for our community to know all the great things going on in our classrooms. And I'm hopeful that people are actually reading it. Last week, we started a professional book club and it is definitely the highlight of my week. Actually, three of the participants are on tonight. We are reading a book by Mike Flynn, Beyond Answers, Exploring Mathematical Practices with Children. The book is set up with each chapter is on a different math practice and it has perfect little vignettes or case studies of things that have happened in real classrooms. And it's just, it's been a joy to meet with teachers once a week and spend an hour talking and learning together. And I'm just very pleased that we have so many staff members that are lifelong learners and willing to give their time to do this with me. So that's been great. Our last professional development day was on January 14th and it was successful. The high school got some more training on Wayfinder, which is the social emotional learning curriculum that we purchased this year to support teachers for them to be able to support students at the secondary level. And then our K through A teachers are really digging into math. I mean, it's math, math and more math. We talk about it all the time and that's great. We did just find out on Tuesday that we've received a grant for another math thing, Math Accelerated Academy. This is exciting, but a very tight timeline. They just told us we had the money this week. We now have about four weeks to pull it together, which is a lot. We do have five fabulous teachers that are willing to work on this academy over February break. So, and April break, but February breaks the tight timeline. It's the February breaks, the one that's a little stressful for the teachers and myself. So we are going to be meeting to, we have to meet a lot of guidelines based on the grant. As Sandy was saying with the grant that she got. So we're meeting next week to decide what students are going to be invited to it. But there are strict guidelines around students that can be invited to it. We want to have invitations out to families by like February 1st so that they can make a decision because it's a big commitment. And we will make clear when we're sharing this family that it's a big commitment. It's not a it is in person. It will be held here. It is Monday through Friday, 7:30 to 12:15. The ratio will be no more than 10 to 12 students to one teacher. And it's focused on grades three through 10. So a lot of this is going to be based on what families are willing to use their February vacation in this way. At the end of the day, that's going to be the variable that determines so much. But we are enthusiastic and hopeful that we will be able to share with them how much fun it will be, that it's not going to be boring and that they'll want to actually come. So that's it. Yes, Dennis.
I guess I can't resist saying this, that, that, you know, as, as an old retired mathematician, any, any chance that I could observe?
Oh, yes.
I haven't done anything with math for 100 years, but you know, that's
Absolutely.
We're going to see if you qualify, young man.
I said, I'm sure.
Yes, we would love to have you come on Sex to Stop.
Jeff has his hand up.
Jeff?
Quick questions. This is really cool about the grant. Sorry that you only have such a tight timeframe on it. I know I'm going to be asked because my life is with like kids in the lower grades. Why is it designed for three to 10? Just it's, it's not like I'm going to be defensive about that. And then my other question is, is it designed, this program, to get kids who are is it designed, this program, to get kids who are on the verge of grasping concepts, to get them to kind of a grade level quickly? Or is it more of dealing with like kids who are, you know, really behind or getting them a little bit more caught up? Or is it designed for kids who have promised to go even further? And whatnot? Like, what are you guys segmenting or targeting for this?
Oh, the state targeted three through 10. My hypothesis would be that they targeted that group because those are the MCAS years. So that would be my guess why they picked that population. Interestingly, the way the grant is written, and I'm actually going to read it directly from the grant because they certainly say it better than I would. But um, I, I think it's, it's different. Most grants I see aren't written this specific about who to invite. So it says, because an acceleration academy should only focus on a few key standards, concepts, students who, based on data gathered through the school year, would benefit the most from targeted instruction to solidify their understanding of these key concepts and/or focus standards should be considered first for invitation. Invitation to this should be viewed as a celebration of a student's hard work. This is not for students who need additional long support. So it's not a remedial, and I think that's why they call it a Math Acceleration Academy. It's um, really to target those kids that you kind of said, Jeff, that either um, just have a passion and, and can be really invigorated by this and, and maybe expand in ways that they haven't been able to in the classroom. And kids that are like right on that cusp and maybe just because of COVID and things, they need a little bit um, of a boost. So yeah, it's not for kids that need long-term interventions. Bonnie?
Yeah, um, I think this is great. Congratulations. Um, are, who's going to help particularly identify some of the students? So will the math teachers be involved? Will the principals be involved?
Yeah, so um, it's going to be all on deck. Administrators are helping. I am helping. The five teachers that have um, agreed to do the academy will be coming and making the decisions. It'll be a group effort on who's invited and what our focus is.
Just because, you know, if I, I'm just saying, hey, I'd rather, you know, as a kid go skiing than um, which they could still do in the afternoon. How are we letting, how are we selling it? That this is going to be a fun experience while really accelerating your math knowledge?
We, I have had some initial conversations. As I said, we just got this on Tuesday, so not as much information as I would like to have for you, but we do want to have some incentives and some celebrations around it. So um, whether or not that means that I can come up with uh, gift certificates for something for the kids for the end of the program or but we do want, I mean, if a child's willing to give up their February vacation, not the whole thing, but the morning. I do want to recognize and celebrate the fact that they're really putting their academics at the forefront.
And when and how the information go forward out there?
So my goal is to have information going out to families the first week of February, along with the invitations to the students that will be invited to it.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, Julie, thank you very much for your report. Which brings us to the end of the meeting. Does anybody have any agenda items they want to suggest at this moment?
I'd like to move to a jerk.
Second.
All right, let's have a roll call vote. Jeff?
Yes.
Danell? Jim?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Art?
Yes.
Tara?
Yes.
Dennis? Bonnie?
Yes.
Jane, thank you very much.